Thank you for tuning into Beyond the Deas, a podcast about the stories taking place in and around El Paso County, Colorado. I'm your host Scott Anderson and my guest today is El Paso County Commissioner for District Four, Loheinos Gonzalez. How are you doing today, Loheinos?
I'm doing great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for making the time for being here today. I really appreciate it. So before we get started, I wanted to quickly add that if listeners are interested in more stories about people doing good in and around El Paso County, or hearing from county leadership about local government priorities and how they operate, you can find additional episodes of this podcast on your podcast platform of choice. But to get into things here, Commissioner, I wanted to start by having you give some of your background prior to becoming a county commissioner yourself.
Sure. And thanks again for having me on. You know, I always like to highlight, you know, what my parents really gave me and my sisters as a, you know, a great life. They, they were migrant immigrants, migrant worker immigrants from Mexico. I was born in the United States and they settled in California, central California agricultural areas, small towns. You know, they focused and they worked the fields, you know, the orange grows, the, to make sure that, you know, they could provide for us. And one of the things my parents, especially my father, really emphasized was education and hard work. And he really thought that if we got a good education, that we could do anything that we wanted to. And so he really emphasized that. I took it to heart as a youth, studied really hard and, you know, we were blessed because we didn't really have money for college. Getting into the Air Force Academy. And so that was really something that, you know, game changer in terms of being able to get through, pay for a college. And coming here to the Colorado Springs area, did my four years here. Struggled initially because I came from a very small town with no advanced classes that we could study because my time was just 3,000. But adapted well after my freshman year, always a difficult first freshman year at the Air Force Academy. But then I did really well at the end and I was able to get into my first choice of career in the Air Force. Wasn't sure I'd stay more than the five years. That was the requirement for going to the Air Force Academy and getting the free education. But I ended up enjoying what I did. I was an intelligence officer and I was good at it. And so I spent 20 years in the military all around the country, worked my first squad and intelligence assignment, working with B-52s and then B-1s. And then intelligence officers generally go into a more general career field. And I ended up working a lot of Latin America work because I am a Spanish speaker and I got involved in some counter drug work. Spent several months down in South America, working with the Drug Enforcement Agency. Then I went overseas, like most military members, I spent a year in the Middle East, did work out there. Not my most fun location, assignment, but the job was very good. And so I was able to learn a lot and expand what I understood in the field of intelligence. But luckily I was able to get back into some Latin America work and actually spent two years in Colombia at the embassy. And the highlight, I've mentioned this before, the highlight of my military career was I was the intelligence chief for collections down there when we were able to, the Colombians were able to execute a hostage rescue and that included three Americans. And so our US support to them was important, of course. And so the highlight was getting to see three Americans returned to the United States after five plus years as hostages. And the, the interesting part there is the, the 12 Colombian hostages that were rescued had each spent, I believe, seven or more years as hostages, including a presidential candidate for Colombia. So this was a big deal. And I highlighted my career continued, of course, for a few more years after that, finishing up in Texas. And at the end of my military career, decided, you know, where do I want to move back to? And, you know, I had really liked this area, loved the outdoors, the front range region. And so I moved back to Colorado Springs. And so I moved back 11 years ago, after a 20 year career in the Air Force and worked a couple of years at Northern Command, continuing some, some Latin America work for them. But I wanted to give back to my community. And so I ended up transitioning into becoming a middle school teacher. Wow. I'd done my master's degree in teaching and then the student teaching and everything. A lot of people just assume I did maybe troops to teachers, but no, I had actually done my master's degree in education and science. And so I was a middle school teacher for a little bit at District Two, Harrison School District. And then I started getting more involved locally and I, you know, I decided to make this run in, in politics. And so I transitioned, ran successfully for the District Four race, wow, six and a half years ago now. And it's been a while now in my second term now. And so I did that, but I still continued to substitute teach through last semester. And I wanted to make sure that I give back to the community. And so even though sometimes it's just for a couple of hours, a couple of times a month, I was still trying to work with students and the youth because I wanted to make sure that we're being good mentors for the next generation. And then I've enjoyed my last six and a half years now as a county commissioner and the work we've been doing as a, as a county to help our residents.
Yeah. I think it'd be pretty safe to say that the transition from an intelligence officer in the Air Force to a middle school teacher may be a little drastic for some.
I wasn't sure which one was more dangerous though. Those Middle Eastern years or the, you know, no, I loved working with the kids. But yeah, so you know, especially the middle age, some of the kids can get a little, a little rowdy. But it was fun and I enjoyed it. And I was just glad that I was able to help our community.
No, that's great. And so how has being a teacher in these, in these last few years helped with your current role that you have?
Oh, that's a good question. And you know what? I really took a lot from it was understanding the needs of parents in particular. And the needs of different communities amongst our, not just Colorado Springs, but El Paso County. We have 17 school districts here, a very diverse needs and what they see and what they need for their communities. And that translates exactly to the county. The county has portions of urban, rural, front range, wildland interface, prairie, military. And so very diverse, same thing we saw in the school district and the people, the, the parents I was interacting with. And then talking to the children, their backgrounds, a lot of them were from military families, especially there in District Two, just north of Fort Carson. And then, you know, immediately west of Peterson, we saw that the needs of the children mirrored kind of what we saw in the El Paso County. And so it was something I think was very useful to understanding the backgrounds and the, the needs of the community and the parents and how it translates to what we should be providing as a county.
Yeah. And with your own background, how has that helped being able to connect with kids and with students? You know, I have kids of my own and it's hard enough for me to connect with my own kids sometimes. But how is having some similar backgrounds, like you said, military or, you know, growing up in different areas? How has that helped you connect with those students that you had?
Sure. The ones in District Two and Harrison School District is the most diverse school district in the Colorado Springs area. And I think one of the most, if not the most diverse also in the entire state. And so the students getting to see somebody like me with a similar background for many of them, either military or from parents who were, you know, immigrants or, you know, minorities, they got to see that somebody like them could get into one of the best colleges in the country and could succeed because of the support of the community and their parents.
Very good. And so I also understand you would do things outside of work. Art is one of the hobbies that you have, from what I understand. How did you get involved in, in art in general and what type of artwork do you like to do?
Oh, sure. So, so as a county commissioner, a couple of things that people knew, I love to fish. And, and so I always try to get more of our county ponds stocked and I've had, had some pushback on that because, but I always do what I can to fish and hike. And I took up art and painting during COVID because clearly there was, during those early months and shutdowns, there was not much to do. And so I ended up watching hours and hours and hours of PBS art specials, some online tutorials. And I had sketched a lot when I was a kid, but really hadn't done anything in 30 plus years. But during that time, I watched, I probably watched about 10 seasons worth of Bob Ross. Right? About 10 seasons worth of Bob Ross, but really just a lot of the online tutorials, PBS specials, other artists. And I just started painting and went from what I would consider art your mom would put on the refrigerator, you know, in my first month or two of COVID to really about 18 months later, getting asked to participate in some local First Friday art walks. And so I've been in a couple of shows and last year, Mount Carmel hosted a veteran submitted art. And I was really happy. I was the People's Choice Award winner. And there was over 100 submitted pieces for that, that show. And we sold that, that winning piece and others for fundraising for Mark Carmel and for veterans. And so I was very proud of the fact that I've gotten to a level where people appreciate my art. And, you know, I'll probably continue to do that. It's very, reduces stress. And in this, this job, sometimes you need something like that. And so getting out and hiking and/or spending some time painting is something that I enjoy doing now. It's a very calming and enjoyable for me.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, as you pointed out during COVID, there seemed to be a dearth of things to do, right? And so when you're able to come up with hobbies, I guess, to come out of that, even ones that apparently you had a hidden talent for, maybe you didn't even know about it. That's really cool and really cool to hear. So what are some of your responsibilities as a county commissioner? I think it's easy to look at the position and say, it's an elected position, but we don't really know what they do. I mean, they're up there, they have meetings and things like that, but not really sure what they do besides that. Can you expand on that some?
Sure. And what I tell people, the number one job of an El Paso or any county commissioner in Colorado is approving and adopting a annual budget. And so all the things that the county does, roads and infrastructure, public safety under the sheriff's office. A lot of people don't realize the clerk recorder doesn't just do elections, they run our DMVs. So DMVs, a lot of people go, oh, I go to my DMV here in the city. Well, that's run by the county, Department of Human Services. So foster care, SNAP, which would previously, you know, welfare type activities and other activities like that, all fund under the county. And the budget comes from the county and is approved by the county commissioners. Now, a lot of those offices, like clerk recorder, the sheriff, assessor, treasurer, those are separately elected offices. But all of their personnel are county employees and their budget comes from the El Paso County commissioners. And so the number one job has always been making sure that we have a strong and sound annual budget. The other thing, of course, that I've tried to always emphasize is the work with roads and infrastructure. How do we get better funding for roads and maintenance, making sure that our public safety, public health is taken care of. And then a lot of people don't realize a lot of our time at our weekly board meetings deals with land use. And so land use, when we see a large project in unincorporated areas, those have to be approved by the county commissioners. And so a lot of work on that because there's always concerns about is a development too big? Do they have the water to, you know, make sure that it's a successful project? Those are the kind of things we have to deal with, you know, on a weekly basis. And some of these can be controversial. Others are, you know, are quite easy, you know, rezoning of, you know, one property to two might not be too controversial, although sometimes it is.
Yeah, you never know.
Versus large scale projects that might bring a lot of controversy and some public input. And so that's largely what we do. And then there's also the other aspect of the additional board meetings that we have. So each commissioner probably has between 12 to 15 additional county boards or committees that we sit on or are liaisons to. So a good example for me, since I got, was elected six and a half years ago, I've been on the Board of Health. And, you know, I have been on, I'm a liaison to the Public Library of the Fountain Creek Watershed District. I think I've spent the five of my six years on that board as well and many others related to water. But, you know, particularly the Board of Health, when I first joined, we had just months before that, I had found out that there was the PFOS, PFOA issues there and security, the wide field aquifer. So really security wide field fountain and parts of Stratmore Hills, Stratmore Valley had water issues related to the PFOS that had come from then Peterson Air Force Base, now Space Force Base. And so what mitigating things could we do, working with the federal government and the Department of Defense to help make sure that all our residents were having clean water? And so that's been a significant issue why I joined the board, why I asked to be one of the two commissioners on that Board of Health. And so I've maintained that membership through my six years. But we traditionally do rotate some of our board membership over. I was on the library board. I came off that and now I'm back. Other boards similar to that. And we do try to choose ones that were more interested in one. Of course, like the water district, the one, the water issue for the Board of Health was in District Four. And so that made sense. And then others are things that we care about and, you know, want to volunteer for. And then because of our kind of higher profile in the community, we sometimes get asked to be on other boards. And so I've actually, I'm on the CASA board, you know, working with youth. I'm also on Mount Carmel as a veteran, working for veterans. And then it's an independent or a separate board, not part of my county requirements. But I'm sure it helped that I was a county commissioner, but I am also a member on the State Board of Veteran Affairs. And that one made sense. I represent three military bases as a county commissioner and I was a veteran myself and every member must be a veteran. But the fact that I represented the three bases, I think it made sense that somebody from El Paso County with five military bases in our community would be a member of the Veterans Board and so for the state. And so I have done what I can to help in all those boards. But yeah, so day to day, we may have one or two meetings and then, you know, meeting with the public is very important. Want to make sure that we always have open, transparent meetings and try to do some community town halls with the public.
Right. Very good. One of those, the primary thing you mentioned was approving and adopting an annual budget. We're middle of August right now, so we're recording this, but before you know it, we're going to start having those meetings for the annual budget to determine what that's going to look like for the coming year. So at least as far as I understand your background, not so much in budgeting and finance. So how do you learn to be responsible, a responsible steward for a budget like El Paso County's when it may not necessarily be your own background?
Sure. And that's a good question. But one of the things that I think military officers get a good experience on, if they do a full career, is that you move up, you do tend to get into headquarters positions where budgeting actually does become an important role. So at my last assignment in the Air Force, I was actually at the Air Force's Headquarters for Intelligence. It was the Air Force ISR agency. And so I was the Deputy Director of the A2, which is the intelligence aspect itself within the branches of logistics, operations, the intel aspect of personnel. And so we had budgets and then I also ended up on the, at one point with the testing evaluation, where we were working with new and future projects that could be an equipment that could be incorporated into the Air Force collection systems. And those, we always had budgets. And so we're also talking about million dollars and that hundred million dollar projects for first thing. So it actually was quite similar in trying to make sure that budgeting is frugal, right? And I've always tried to be frugal, trying to make sure that we are maximizing our return on investment. And in my six and a half years, I've always tried to emphasize roads and infrastructure and our public safety.
Yeah. So one of the things that happened just recently was the announcement that Space Command Headquarters is staying here in Colorado Springs. As someone who was in the Air Force, has a lot of connections to military, this must've been something that you were really happy about. Why is that such a significant thing here for us in this region?
Sure. And it was always, I believe, the right thing for national security. But for our region, this is something that with the military bases that we have here, the installations, the support that we've provided, I think we've proven that we're a strong supporter of our military and you need to have that and you want to have that. There's also the coordination between so many defense contractors and defense industry leaders here in this community that melded perfectly with the active military installations that we have. And then the contractor and industry and the Defense Department working here side by side. We've also seen the great support from top to bottom at the state, county and local level of elected officials who have been willing to support in any way that's needed to support these bases. And that all helps once again to make sure that the military installations and their operations are conducted in a way that that's maximized at the national level. And that's why for national defense, this made a lot of sense. And a couple of the highlights there was it would have cost probably a billion dollars to move the headquarters to another location. The manning of that is about 50% civilian, 50% active duty military or reserves. But that 50% of the civilians, this is where people like to live and work. And they would have likely lost a lot of that civilian expertise had it moved somewhere else. And then additional aspects about having to have secure and defensible communications. Again, could have cost billions of dollars more if they had to do that from scratch in a different location. And so again, for the economics of the government and national security, it made sense to stay here and we're very proud that we were able to retain it.
Very good. And then another big issue that recently came to a resolution was the county redistricting process. So how does going through a process like that help showcase the county's efforts to be transparent in the work that it does?
Right. Well, from day one, we wanted to make sure that we had a great public input to this process. And so we ended up having 10 total meetings on this and we wanted to make sure at every stage, we had public input so that we could do our best effort at developing maps that would make sense for our diverse community that we have. Again, trying to meld the wildland interface on the west side, the urban centers, the, the eastern plains, the military installations and just the differences that we have from our smaller, small municipalities. Trying to make sure what worked best to have our five commissioner districts redistricted in a, in a way that, you know, that made sense for everybody. And so that public input was vital. I think we did a great job in being transparent and explaining the process from day one through that 10th meeting. And at the end, we ended up taking several maps and then taking variants of maps that we thought were, were going in the right direction. And again, doing so in a way that maximized what made sense for our community while meeting the mandates from the state. There was a state law that mandated the process and make sure we did it in a way that complied with that. The first thing, of course, was making sure that the population of each of the five districts was roughly the same. From top to bottom, from the largest district to the smallest one, had to be within 5% of the populations. And so that was always the one, number one aspect. And then looking at communities of interest and other aspects, including competitiveness in districts where other areas that were looked at as well. And so I thought we did the best job that we could. Can't always have, you couldn't have a perfect map, right? Right? There's too many things that needed to be done, but very proud of the work that we did. And the comments mostly from, from the residents. I'll highlight the fact from the first couple of meetings, what the residents asked for, we actually ended up incorporating in the final map, which is the number one thing that we heard was consolidating the southeast part of Colorado Springs, which is a high minority area into, to, into one district. And we did get that all in District Five. Keeping Monument whole, that was asked for and that was split in the previous map. And that was done as well. Comments about Patty Jewett neighborhood in the middle of the city, trying to get that whole because it was split between the districts five and three. We made those whole. And then after the first couple of meetings down in the Fountain Valley, the area I represent, they were very loud about making sure that we, they kept Fort Carson as part of District Four and we did that as well. So the, the main request from the public that we heard for, heard of, we were able to accomplish in this map. And so I was very proud of it.
Yeah. Now, and how does being transparent and working with the public in general really relate to the other issues that you work on? The other work that you do as a county commissioner?
Well, you always want to have trust and you need to have the support of the public. You know, if we have something, we're moving forward on what's an appropriate budget. The public needs to know that we're doing what's best and doing our best effort for what's, what's best for the community and what's best for them. And so if you're not transparent, you're going to hurt that trust. And so being transparent, open and having as many meetings as we did in that example, but in any example, having town halls, bringing the public together when we have issues of importance, that builds trust. And so when we make decisions, it, it helps that that trust has already been built so that we have, they understand it's like, yes. Hey, the county commissioners have likely made a decision that, that made the sense, made most sense for all of us.
Yeah. Very good. So you mentioned this a little earlier. You've now served as a county commissioner for over six years at this point. Can you talk about some of the accomplishments that you're proud of since you've been a county commissioner? As well as some of the things that you'd like to see done prior to the end of your term?
Sure. And I'll focus on two. One, I had mentioned before, the PFOS, PFOA issue from day one. That was a significant issue because it had just happened within probably six months before I took office. And in terms of having it identified as, as an issue by the military. And we were able to get the, the residents quickly to filtration systems for homes funded by the Department of Defense. And over the course of that first year and second year, getting commercial grade, large scale filtration systems to the water districts. And so over the course of several years of transition to these commercial grade water filtration, filtration systems, where their water districts were able to now produce basically water that had non-detect of PFOS. And so basically they getting it down to, they're not even identifying any PFOS in the water that's being brought up. And so very proud of the fact that within that first year, we were able to make sure our residents down there were all drinking clean, safe water. And even the households that remained on well waters have continued to receive filtration, home filtration systems and replacement filters for their homes by the Department of Defense because of the efforts done by all the local electeds. But I think the county were great leaders in making sure that the federal government, Department of Defense did what they, they were supposed to do and take care of our residents. And so we've continued to do that. It's always when I do, the rare times that I do get to meet the US senators for Colorado, which is a couple of times a year. Actually, just the other, the other week when I saw Senator Bennett at the Space Command. I actually reminded him, say, don't forget about our PFOS, make sure that keeps funded. Funding for the filtration systems because we want to make sure that the Department of Defense does what they're supposed to do and take care of our residents. Because of this issue came, you know, came from the, the military. But they have been great partners too. From day one, the Department of Defense stood with us and the leadership at Peterson stood with us in making sure that we got things done. The other aspect is from day one, I was always focused on making sure our roads and infrastructure had received a increased portion of our annual budget. Because that's what I was hearing from the public. And every year it is always first or second on what the public has concerns of, making sure our roads are taken care of. And so I've always made sure that additional funds have gotten into roads and infrastructure. And if you look back from when I started to now, you see a great increase to, to our funding. It's still, I don't think where it needs to be, but with lean budgets, because the county does have lean budgets every year. It has been the best we can do. And I think the public can, can trust us that we've been doing what we can to get those roads and bridges and infrastructure improved. And we're going to continue to do so through the end of my, my term.
So what are some things in your opinion that you think El Paso County residents should be paying close attention to in the coming months and years?
Sure. That's a great question. And as I go into my, my last year, next year, one of the things I need to continue to look at, as I've talked about, trying to increase funding for roads and infrastructure and, you know, public safety is a softening of the economy. Because with potentially reduced revenues or flat revenues, you know, funding for important projects like roads and like public safety, because statewide and locally and nationwide, we've seen an uptick in crime. We need to make sure we can address that. And so anytime we're looking at annual budgets that are, need to get increased in those areas, a soft economy is going to not allow additional, potentially additional funds to those areas. And I'm always going to prioritize that. If for some reason the economy comes down, I'm going to make sure that those areas receive still the largest proportion of our budget. But that's something just in terms of like services that people need to be aware of. And then as we've already started seeing right now, the high inflation, you know, other issues, property taxes. Right now are probably what I've getting a lot of concerns about. And the public should be aware that with these increased, what we saw, the statements for the valuations on the property taxes, that El Paso County still falls under taper. There's also a secondary rule in terms of how, how much a property tax valuation can be increased. tax valuation can be increased. And so El Paso County will reduce the rate as required. And so you will see a reduction of, I'd say, a lesser increase to that property tax bill as El Paso County, as we go through the budget process, will reduce the rates to make sure that we do not keep that, that increase. I believe Colorado Springs and our other municipalities locally also have that. But what residents also need to be concerned about or have input on is the largest proportion of your property tax bill is paid to school districts. So they need to get with their local school district to understand if they are still tied to taper, or if they have de-tabored in some way. If they have de-tabored in some way, then they're going to need to ask that school board to reduce the rates on the property tax. Again, residents do need to follow up on this, because the largest proportion of the property tax goes to school districts, not to the county, not to the cities. And so they should be, and I've been recommending to everybody, get with your school boards, request that they reduce the rates. And the ones that are still tied to taper would be forced to do that. There are others that are not, they would have to make a change. And so I think we need to be very careful. We've seen inflation, and we see this, this hit on the property taxes is going to hurt residents if, if reduced rates aren't passed in some way. So, hey, get out there, talk to your school districts. The county will do what we've always done, we will reduce those rates and for the county portion of the tax.
Yeah. And that's actually brings up a really interesting thing. So last year, I remember when we were going through the budget discussions, and I say last year, because I've only been with the county for a year. I remember when the presentations were happening, there was a slide that went up that showed a dollar bill and kind of sliced it up and said, this portion of your taxes goes to schools, this portion goes to roads, this portion goes to XYZ. And it actually did a really good job for me illustrating, oh, wait a second, like, yeah, like a majority of our taxes do in fact go to public schools, like you were saying. And one thing that I think is great about the way we do things and in trying to be transparent, all of those budget meetings are open to the public. They can come and see those for themselves and get an understanding of how El Paso County is working their budget. And so what you're saying about people, you know, learning about these things, we're not, you're not asking them to go do a whole bunch of research on their own. They can actually come to budget meetings like, like ours and get some of that information for themselves.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have numerous meetings. And I have my first one-on-one meeting with our budget office, I believe, in a week or two. And then we're going to immediately go into meetings. And September and October are the, really the, the months where we, we do the hard, the hard work to get this done and with our budget office. And the main parts of that is going to be done in the open meetings at our board meetings. And so I always ask the public to come in, give us advice. They can do it online. Hey, we recommend you spend more money here. We recommend you spend more money there. And then as I will later, we'll highlight the fact that I always say, the second to last meeting is the most important, because we will literally bring up the Excel spreadsheet, I don't know if it's Excel, but spreadsheet, the spreadsheet, which is the dollar amounts. And we will literally move dollars around up, oh, let's add 500 here, reduce 250 here, reduce 250 there, to areas of the budget that we think are critical. And the public can be right there during the public comment said, hey, we think you need to add here, or you, this is too much money here. And we make those changes in that last meeting. It might be 95% done, but we'll make last minute changes there. The last meeting is usually just an approval. And I don't think in any of my six previous budgets, have we made a change on the last day. You can.
Right.
But we've not done so. It's always the second to last one. So I always recommend people to do that. But I ask people to follow the budget, give us advice. You can do it online, you can come to the meeting and do it at the meetings. But it's very important to make sure that your priorities get addressed in the budget by coming to the meetings or sending us those recommendations online.
Excellent. And then before we close out here, I was just wondering if there's anything else that you'd like to add, maybe something we haven't covered yet, or a point that you think is really important, you just want to reiterate?
Well, for me, I've just always been so proud to be in this position of the, being able to be a voice for the public and our residents. I do take that to heart. It's an important role here. And so I just ask the public to come out to our meetings, provide input regardless of the area. And you know that, that your input is valued, and that, you know, when we work together, we can get things done. And so I think we've been able to do that in my six and a half years. And I want to make sure that my last year is the strongest and best. And so I ask for that continued feedback and input from the public.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. I appreciate you taking the time today and for all the work that you do for El Paso County here. So thank you for being here. If you're interested in listening to additional episodes of Beyond the Dais, you can find us on Podbean or wherever you get your podcasts. Thanks for listening and we'll see you next time.